I would like to call the meeting to order at this time. Are there any special intentions, Chief Connolly?
Yeah, I'd like to ask that we continue to keep Sergeant Foltz and his family, our prayers. That's our officer that passed away last week. I do also want to thank the members of the administration and the fire department for helping, you know, bury him with full honors and in a very dignified manner. I want to thank you all for that. So if we just continue keeping him as family in our prayers, I'd appreciate it.
Councilman Branigan? Oh, you do. At this time, we will ask Councilman Branigan, would he lead us in prayer? And Councilman Shawatt, would he lead us in the pledge?
Please bow your head, Lord God. Please lift all of our city employees up today and every day. We cannot control what life brings their way, but I trust that you are taking care of all of them all of the time. As we know, you only give us what we can handle. Please hold them close to your heart and protect them. We need them. Please give our employees the strength and endurance and wisdom to navigate through their day in order to make the city of Kenner the best that it can be. Please also give the administration and all elected officials the ability to make the right choices for the city of Kenner residents. They put us here to do that. Lord, we know that you are the key to our success and our paths are already laid out for us. Thank you for giving us the opportunity, making a difference by letting us wake up today and open our eyes wide open this morning. Please watch over the family of Kenner Police Officer Sergeant Foltz and protect all of our first responders. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, ma'am, we have a quorum. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B 14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Next, we have correspondence reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads.
You ready for me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Glad to be back. So getting that time of year where we have a lot of stuff going on here in the city of Kenner. Kenner's Magical Christmas Village will be here in Rivertown. As you can see, they're setting it up. It opens Sunday, December 1st, 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. It's free and will be open every Friday and Saturday through December 31st. And on the 1st, at 6:00 p.m., we have an Elvis show. So I'd like to thank the Gloriosos for talking me into having an Elvis show here in Rivertown. He's not happy. Our annual fundraiser for the food bank, Sippin' with Santa, will be Tuesday, December 3rd, at Chateau Country Club from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Tickets can be purchased on the city's website. I'd like to thank once again Chief Connolly for, once again, hosting this fundraiser for the food bank with me. And Kenner Recreation, congratulations to all the children who won football championships last night at Musburger Lino. So I understand they had a pretty good time, so they were happy to see their teams on our new video scoreboard. So, you know, adds a lot to them. And also at Kenner Recreation, registration is now open for basketball, martial arts, teen sports, soccer, and the annual Christmas events. You can find that on the city's website under the Recreation tab. And a little update on what I've been doing with Hurricane Ida. We had the lawsuit with our insurance company. We had mediation yesterday in New Orleans that lasted pretty much all day and resulted in little progress. So it's still going to be going along. I think we scheduled for arbitration in New York next March. So we'll see if we can come to some agreement prior to that. So I've been asked a few times about the fence around the old City Hall building. The City Hall demolition has started. The building is not coming down, but they're doing some remediation inside the building that you really can't see. And with that demolition, it's causing a fire station to be temporarily relocated to our old break tag station. That replacement fire station is being designed now. So that's, so hopefully in the near future, we'll have a set of plans where we can start that construction. And on a, I guess, a sooner note, Tuesday, this coming Tuesday at 1:00 p.m., we'll have a groundbreaking for the new Duke Street Fire Station. So finally, after two and a half years of me being in this office trying to get this project up and running, some of the plans were a little outdated, had to be brought up to code, secured the funding. So Tuesday at 1:00 p.m., we'll have a groundbreaking. And what I've been told, it's about a 12-month construction period. The old Treadmill Chest Boat, the interior is pretty much dismantled now. And their email to me was, in the next several weeks, the boat will be moved and that site will be dredged, and then they'll vacate that site and return it over back to the city. And we'll be able to have something else out there. Whoever, you know, some people have approached us about some kind of businesses or restaurants out there. So we'll see what that leads to. Another couple of questions that my office is receiving on property tax bills. Most of the increase is due to the new fire millage, as you can see. Increase, the increase was approved by voters last year. It went into effect January 1st of this year, so we collected, finally collecting the increased millages. And what that allows us to do is build the two new fire stations. We have two new fire trucks on order. We settled a longstanding lawsuit with the Fire Retirement Board. We're able to raise the fire pay and correct promotional pay. So we follow, the fire system and pay is pretty much dictated by state law. What you don't know that's not dictated by state law is when a fireman or policeman is hired in their first year, they're not eligible for supplemental pay. It's a state benefit that kicks in after one year of employment. The city has long paid the first year of supplemental pay. So that's a benefit. And finally, if you, I know some firemen passed out a couple of things here this morning, but if you go back and look at some Jefferson Parish council meetings where we're finally getting Jefferson Parish firemen begging for pay because they're losing people to New Orleans and Kenner, which you've never heard that before. So I'm sure that's not in there. So I'd like to thank Chief Morris and Chief Dyer for their hard work in this millage and putting the, it's tough calculating each individual salary and putting a P A. So with that millage increase in June of this year, decided to roll back all millages, except for the new fire millage. The Assessors Office, their last assessment, Kenner's taxable property value went up $21,966,287. By rolling it back, it pretty much keeps the taxes the same as last year. So it's only going to cost us a little over $225,000 that if we rolled it forward and collected more taxes. I felt that $200 and something thousand dollars is not going to do a lot. It would be better in somebody's pocket than rolling, you know, taxes, raising a little bit. You see a little increase just because of the way the system works. But by rolling it back, it kind of keeps and hopefully offsets a little bit of the increase in fire millage. And lastly, Kenner Administrative Offices will be closed next Thursday and Friday for the Thanksgiving holiday. And on behalf of my staff and the city employees, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And that's it.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have the consent agenda. Item 1 is approval of minutes. Regular council meeting of November 7th, 2024. Item 2 is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. Item 2A is a resolution granting an alcoholic beverage permit to Friends of Rivertown on December 1st, 2024, at 2015 Fourth Street, Kenner Heritage Park, being property owned by the city of Kenner. Item 3 is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item 3A is application number 2430-24, the city of Kenner to hold a public gathering on December 1st, 6th, 7th, 13th, 14th, 20th, and 21st of 2024, from 5:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. for the purpose of Kenner's Magical Christmas Village at 2024, 2024 at Heritage Park. That will conclude the consent agenda. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item 8, public hearings and final passage. We have none. Item 9 is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and/or alienation of removable property. We have none. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. Item 12A is summary ordinance number 13,688, an ordinance declaring one Ford Crown Victoria fire vehicle as surplus and authorizing its donation to Jefferson Parish for the Fire Services Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. Item 13A is a resolution calling a public hearing to determine whether the structure is located at 1235 Roosevelt Boulevard, Kenner, Louisiana, shall be abated by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal. I have a motion by Councilmember Shawatt, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 13B is a resolution appointing Ryan N. Cox as court magistrate for the city of Kenner Mayor's Court. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 13,683, an ordinance authorized on utilization of state contract number 4400030797 with Lee Tractor Company Incorporated to purchase industrial equipment on an as-needed basis and an amount not to exceed $600,000 annually for the Fleet Management Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 13,684, an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Gulf States Distributors to purchase 25 Smith &amp; Wesson M&amp;P 9mm compact semi-automatic pistols and related accessories in accordance with electronic bid 24-2147 in the amount of $12,725 for the Kenner Police Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 13,685, an ordinance ratifying an emergency repair of the Fairbanks Morse Submersible Pump Number 2 located at 31st and Washington Lift Station by Fluid Processing Pumps LLC in the amount of $19,870 for the wastewater department. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Shawatt. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15D is summary ordinance number 13,686, an ordinance approving amendment number 1 to the agreement with Christmas Village LLC to supply Christmas lights as needed to increase the agreement amount by $40,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $90,000 annually for the General Services Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15E is summary ordinance number 13,687, an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from BGS LLC for the purchase of 110 fire hoses in accordance with electronic bid 24-2146 in an amount not to exceed $20,416 for the Kenner Fire Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Shawatt, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15F is summary ordinance number 13,689, an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid proposal received from Lamarck Ford to furnish two 2022 used vehicles in the amount of $61,760 for the Kenner Police Department. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15G is summary ordinance number 13,690, an ordinance approving an agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, state project number H period 013370, federal aid project number H 013370 regarding LA 48, Kenner Levy Trailhead Expansion Improvement Project. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilman Wilmot?
Yes, if I can just give an explanation on this one?
Yes, Councilman, this is an old grant that dates back to September of 2017. Our prior administration had secured the grant. However, no action had been taken to move forward with the project. And when this matter was brought up by DOTD engineer to the current administration as to what we wanted to do with that grant, was whether the city was still interested in securing the grant or not, our response, of course, was yes. We wanted to go ahead and proceed with the grant. And in order to be able to proceed with the grant, we had to update the cost of the grant. So the grant went up from $200 and some more thousand dollars to $800 and some more thousand dollars. So in order to be able to activate this grant, we need a state-city agreement. And this is what this legislation does. It allows us to proceed with the grant, and it will allow us to proceed with the selection of a consultant that's going to provide the necessary design services for a number of improvements that are going to take place at the Lassalle Landing. That's a new bathroom facility, restoration of a river observatory, a new bus shelter, a new drinking water fountain, new sidewalks, some bench repair work, a bicycle station, and all the miscellaneous electrical work. It's a good thing for the city.
Very thorough as usual. Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 16 is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item 16A is an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Fleming Construction Company LLC for the 42nd and Lake Trail and 31st and Loyola Sewer Lift Station improvements in the amount of $415,473 in accordance with sealed bid number 24-6843 for the Department of Wastewater. Item 16B is an ordinance approving an agreement with Design Engineering Incorporated for professional engineering services on an as-needed basis for an amount not to exceed $49,500 for the Department of Public Works. Item 16C is an ordinance approving an agreement for consulting services with Conic and Associates LLC in an amount not to exceed $120,000 annually for the Kenner Police Department. Item 16D is an ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Louisiana Department of Treasury and the state of Louisiana and the city of Kenner for road repairs and improvements to Roosevelt Boulevard. Item 16E is an ordinance ratifying an emergency repair of fire engine 378 located at Fire Station 37 by Kenworth of Louisiana in the amount of $64,357.51 for the Kenner Fire Department. Item 16F is an ordinance ratifying an emergency repair of vintage and Meadock Lift Station Pump Number 2 by Fluid Processing Pumps LLC, a sole-source provider in the amount of $23,570 for the Department of Wastewater. Item 16G is an ordinance approving amendment number 1 with MSMM Engineering LLC, associated with the 42nd and Lake Trail and 31st and Loyola Sewer Lift Station Improvements Project, to extend the term of the agreement to December 31st, 2026, and to add resident inspection services in the amount of $28,980, which increases the total amount of the agreement to $101,028 for the Department of Wastewater. Item 16H is an ordinance ratifying an emergency repair of the wastewater treatment plant sludge conveyor belt by Serpentes Conveyor Corporation, a sole-source provider of Serpentes parts and equipment in the amount of $170,415.39 for the Department of Wastewater. Item 16I is an ordinance approving of sub-recipient agreement between the city of Kenner and Volunteers of America Southeast Louisiana in an amount not to exceed $85,000 for the Community Development Department. Item 16J is an ordinance accepting the dedication of Winning Way. Item 17 is reports from the council and our special committees. Councilman Lahat?
Yeah, I just want to say we had the ribbon cutting for the completion of the Power Boulevard expansion project on Monday. It's beautiful. It was timely done, been about a year. I want to thank the Public Works Department, Jose, for all the questions I had over the time when that project went proceeded. We had a lot of public and community input from the local Palm Vist Association in Driftwood. It's got beautiful lights. It's a great place to walk your dog, go for a run. It interconnects to Jefferson Parish now with that project from District 4 in Jefferson. And I'm glad it's finally done, but thank everybody, especially Cast Construction, which was the contractor on the project.
Item 18 is new business. We have none. Item 19 is unfinished business and are motions to reconsider or remove from the table position. We have none. Item 20 is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Mr. Margaret Wagner?
Yes?
Please approach the podium and you'll have three minutes. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Margaret Wagner. I live at 5212 Toby Lane, between West Esplanade and the canal. I'm just calling today- I'm just calling today to thank whoever was responsible for the lovely median that was improved on Power Boulevard. It's exceptional. And also, the walking path between Wilson and Power Boulevard is another exceptional thing. Everybody's using it, and everybody's bragging about it. It's looked very safe, there's so many lights around there. And the only thing I have to ask is, there is a trash can next to Power on the walking path. I'm not sure about Wilson, but people are throwing trash in there, and it has not been opened for I don't know how long. I took my trash bags this morning to go and see if I could clear it up, and open the top, and there's a huge black bag in there that's been really tied up, and I couldn't pick it up, it was so heavy. So obviously, it has not been emptied. And I emptied, I took everything off the top and bought my trash bags and put them in trash bags and took them back to my house. So that's the only thing I would like to see if someone could address that. I don't know who's supposed to pick it up or what, but we dearly need someone to do that. And I want to thank you again. Everything looks lovely, and we all appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman, we'll have the Public Works Department go ahead and do an investigation and pick up the garbage.
Yeah, where that trash can is, I'm not sure exactly.
Me neither, but we'll locate it.
And thank you, I appreciate you coming up and sound, I love it too. It's a beautiful area now. Thank you.
It's the trash can, I'm sure, at the foot of the bridge.
Of the bridge, the Vintage Connection, okay. We'll get on that. Thank you for bringing the trash back to your house. We always love people, the community helping, you know, the city with issues like that. But we'll get on that and get that cleared up, okay?
Evelyn Evans? Ms. Evans? Matthew Hotard?
Before my clock starts, I just wanted to give my condolences not only to Officer Foltz's family, Police Department, and his friends, but also for Almarilla, friends and family. I'm Matthew Hotard, District Five, Kenner Firefighter Association President. Today in this room, we have active, retired, and previous members of the Kenner Fire Department that are present. Those working cannot attend, but I wanted to assure you all, they're here for a reason. I have spoken multiple occasions, more times than I would like to admit, dating back to the past administration on several issues such as public safety, retention, budget issues, firefighter safety, and the pay issues, just to name a few. The council has met with us on multiple occasions, and for that, I wanted to say thank you. The mayor and his staff have met with us since day one on multiple occasions, and for that, I wanted to say thank you. Before the historic millage approval was even brought forth through this council, I had to notify this mayor and our fire chief of a lawsuit we never wanted, but had to be filed, which is a very difficult thing to do. I was told by my fire chief that it was bad timing, and this should have been done after the millage. That would have never, ever happened. At this point, I realize relationships have been splintered, but we have been nothing but open and honest about the state of this department since day one. It is also important to note that since the mayor and this council have been in office, there's been many things pushed forward to help our department, and we are grateful for that. Please understand that today is not directed in any way towards you. As the president, I'm here to notify the mayor's office, council, and citizens of Kenner of the vote of no confidence that was put forward by the Kenner Firefighters Association for Chief Terrence Morris. This is something we do not take lightly, but believe it is necessary for our department to truly move forward and sustain the quality of personnel and care that our citizens are used to. I've got up here and spoken about our retention, which directly affects public safety. Since two thousand and twenty-three, we have lost fourteen members of the department. Seven or eight of those are actually suppression. Since two thousand and eighteen, we were lost over twenty-five members of our Kenner Fire Department. This simply is not sustainable. Though now, we have no problem, it seems, putting rookie classes in. We have put the most rookie classes in in the shortest amount of time in the sixteen years that I've been here, but yet we are still losing veterans and firefighters that have been employed with the City of Kenner at an alarming rate. I can promise you, the ones that have left are not the end of this unless something changes. I am very well aware that a thirteen dollar an hour pay plan is to go into effect January one, but a large portion of this problem is that we have not been given any sort of pay plan that we can look at and see. This lawsuit was something we never wanted to do. This certainly is something that I never thought I would have to do, but it is a necessity for us to let you know that this is where our association stands in moving forward with the fire department and the safety we can provide for the city. Thank you.
Burton All South, two zero four Anna Street, M, Louisiana. Just here to support my fellow firefighters. I was asked to speak, because I worked here for seven years, I was very dedicated. A lot of people know me, know how dedicated I was, and I loved working for the city. It was one of the hardest decisions of my life, honestly, to leave, because this is a great place to work. You know, the fire service is a deep thing. It's called being into the job, and I was into it, a lot of these guys are into it. Unless you do this, you really don't understand what that means, and it's a great place to work. You know, you get a lot of variety of emergencies here. The firefighters here are honestly some of the hardest working people I've ever worked with. I've, I travel all around the country, I'm pretty involved in the fire service, I network with a lot of other fire departments, and I'll tell you what, these men and women there, y'all are lucky to have them. They're, they're awesome. So anyways, I was forced to leave because of my quality of life and financial reasons. I was working up to four hundred hours a month just to make a livable wage. I experienced extreme burnout, which took a toll on my physical and mental health, and I was forced to make the decision to leave. And I truly miss it, I really do. So typically, firefighters leave for three reasons. It's going to be pay, it's going to be morale, and it's going to be schedule. That's the average. You have two of the three problems. You have a morale problem, and you have a pay problem. So this council, the leadership, needs to really take this serious. I see it happen to a lot of fire departments, and you have a severe problem here that needs to be addressed. I'm really just disappointed that the firefighters had to call vote of no confidence. I thought this city would have already kind of addressed this. It needs to be, it needs to be addressed. Yeah, and basically to sum up, the city, the city needs to finally, like, stop accepting, like, mediocrity and take care of these firemen, because the safety of the citizens and the safety of these firefighters depend on it. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Greg Taft, Fifth District. I just got a couple of things that I want to bring up. One of them is, I want to wish the administration, our elected officials, citizens of Kenner, and all the personnel in Kenner a safe holiday that's coming up for Thanksgiving. And the second thing, though, is I am concerned about the rollback, because what I don't understand is, some of, some of the council members here have been here for at least five, six years. And if, what I heard, and I probably misunderstood it, is that the fire department's pay is made, is basically structured, I guess, by the state. Now, if that's the case, why haven't we, as the council and as the administration, of course, we can't talk about past administrations because they're not here, have done something with the budget that would have given our fire personnel raises sooner? And I'm not talking about the regular two percent that has passed out. I'm talking about where they got a competitive pay. There's a difference between what we pay and then being competitive and allowing good people to stay instead of having to look elsewhere. Now, for years, I've heard how deplorable some of the fire stations are. And again, it's not necessarily reflective of this administration, but, but the four council people that's been here, I don't know how we didn't maybe step into that arena and look into it ourselves, because you certainly did when you wanted to change the budget. So that is a concerning point to me, too. Now, the last, one of the last things I want to bring up is that the citizens voted to give our fire department competitive pay. Now, if, again, if I heard right, the general funds, but is not really moving that much in the budget. We're now going to pay them with what we just voted on with the millage. And because we're going to use the general fund to build a fire station that was already supposed to be in the works. I take it this suit's been ongoing, so I mean, this administration probably got, handed it to them, but it's still, I don't understand why we have waited so long to do something. Again, because I brought it up many times, we have to have retention. And my time's up, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Thomas Calerlina?
Corregliano.
Okay, Corregliano.
Thomas Corregliano, one oh four three four, Budigore Rouge, Gonzalez, Louisiana. Twenty-three years and ten, eleven months with the Kenner Fire Department as a captain at Station Thirty-seven. I'm here to thank Matt Hotard for everything he said, the council, for all your past wisdom and watching and looking over and seeing everything that we've done, and the mayor as well, backing us on a lot of things, including the millage increase. Guess what I'm about to say here is just coming out from, from me personally, but with this administration that we have right now, and the firefighters leaving in droves, what's happening, and with the, with the new employees, is we're having a big gap in my, in my eyes, a big gap from new employees to senior employees. There's nothing in the middle. You want experience on these scenes, especially scenes that you have emergencies that are, whether it's a work in structural fire or even a medical situation. So if we can't correct the problem, I know we have a millage increase, but if we can't correct the problem with the administration fixing the situation, maybe there's, maybe there's a reason we need, we need to change something. And what I'm getting at is, we all know what Matt talked about, you know, from, from the unions, from, from the union, what we're looking to do. So I don't do this on a regular basis, I'm just putting my two cents in on the situation. And I guess, I don't know if I'm making any sense, but in reality is, we have operators that have, in a sense, it took me eleven and a half years to make an operator, took me another five and a half, six years to become captain. Now we're having firefighters making the operator in five years or less, and then they're about to make captain within two or three years. They don't have the experience. And as you keep on losing nutrition from senior people retiring and mid-grade people going to other departments, all you're going to have is rookies in their ten-year being a captain. And that's, that's a hard, that's a hard piece of fat to chew, because you don't have experience out there. So I'm just saying, there's a lot of places we need to look, and sometimes it's not just the firefighters. It could be the places that we need to look in other, other areas upstairs. So I just wanted to put my two cents in on this. Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.